We're in such close contact with somebody it made it a little easier hopefully for you so you don't have to go to separate places. I'm Rosie Miller, president of the Huffman Historic Neighborhood Association and I'd like to welcome you to our neighborhood meeting. The way we're going to do this is we'll start with the candidates for commission. Everybody will have five minutes to speak and then after the commission candidates then we'll have the mayoral candidates and then we'll open it up to questions from the floor. All right, we have with us tonight, I believe, if I'm wrong, please raise your hand, but I think we just have two of the commission candidates. David Esri, oh, three, I'm sorry. Joey Williams, so he's the current commissioner, David Greer, and David Esri. So make it easy, why don't we go in health, that's more, or then I'm not, that makes it simple. David?
You make this difficult. Asia, come over here, I'm gonna put you to work. So, spin. Don't spin too hard because it takes too long to stop. All right, and the topic will be the charter changes. I've been doing this for a long time, 20 years in fact. My name is David Esri, I'm a small businessman, and I'm a veteran. I'm also community activist and I think most of you should know me by now. If you don't, there we have a real problem. And I've got a whole bunch of issues here on this wheel and those candidates are welcome to use it to make things more interesting because the last thing candidates should do is come up here and talk about themselves for five minutes. But I've seen that, year in, year out. What we need to talk about is the things that need to change in the city of Dayton and I can talk at length about any of these, in fact, I do on esri.com which I've been writing posts since 2005. There's over 2,000 posts there, that's a lot of posts, a lot of information. So, the charter. The charter has been changed several times in the last eight years and I say eight years because that's basically when we have had Commissioner Whaley, Commissioner Williams on the commission and the things they've changed have been housekeeping issues. Well, we've got a major housekeeping issue in the process of electing people, in the process of getting people to put, giving the people the ability to change the charter and the ability to remove one of us once elected. And the biggest problem we have is somewhere along the line we changed the number, how we calculate the number of registered voters in the city. And this is done by the Secretary of State and now we have over 100, right around 100,000 registered voters in the city of Dayton, which is pretty amazing since the Census Bureau says there's only 108,000 people over the age of 18, which would mean basically 93% of people are registered voters. Our charter specifies, and this is all kind of wonky until you think about it, but charter specifies to put a charter change on the ballot requires 10% of the registered voters to sign a petition. Now, we have a real problem with petition signing, I was in court today with Mr. Pace who's having some problems with it, but there is about a 40% average rejection rate on getting signatures on petitions when you take number of candidates that run as a whole. So you've got to add 40% to the 10% that it would take to put a charter change on, that means you'd need about 14,000 signatures just to get the charter change on the ballot. I hate to tell you, but 14,000 is probably how many people will vote in the primary. In the rest of the state of Ohio, in Craig, Ohio, revised code, we change, other communities change it by a percentage of people who voted in the last election. 10% of that number is doable, 10% of a number that is mythical at best, the 100,000 voters, is impossible. And to remove a commissioner is 25% of the signatures of the registered voter. So you'd need 25,000 signatures plus 20 to 40% extra and that's more than the people, number of people that vote. So, we need to change the charter. Our current commission has done nothing to change this or change the process of getting on the ballot. Right now it requires 500 signatures, folks, that's 10 times the number it takes to run for United States Congress. It's a formidable number and the reason our city founders did this is they wanted to take the politics out of it and they want it to be nonpartisan. And what have we got? We've got a partisan organization, the Board of Elections, screening, pre-screening the candidate to turn in petitions and invalidating the will of the people because of technicalities in Mr. Pace's case. This BS needs to change. We need to have open, honest elections where the people decide who gets on the ballot and the people, that's why we have a primary, so you can select the top ones and get it down to the ones you want to have run. That's why we have a primary. These changes are very simple, it takes three votes on the commission. Mayor Lightzel is committed to make these changes happen. He has not had two other votes. Of course, we have one vote for the last year that hasn't been doing his job and nobody's challenged it or done anything to change it. This kind of, the charter is very clear, you miss five meetings in a row, you're out, we have a special election. I guarantee if I had missed five meetings, I'd be out if I had gotten elected. That's the way things work here. I have four minutes, 35 seconds.
Can I use that the rest of the time?
Yes, you can use it the rest of the time. So, if you need more information, the three independent candidates who are running, we're working together, you can go to DaytonIndependence.com, you'll find out a lot more about us, that would be myself, Mr. Green, Independent Dayton, and Mayor Lightzel, thank you very much.
You've got a set for both?
Yes.
Okay. Are you still there?
Set this on the floor for now, but it's here if anybody needs it.
Mind you, several questions?
Hello, my name is David K. Greer. Thank you for inviting me to come out. I have lived in Dayton all my life, born and raised here. Retired federal employee, I worked at the Wright Patterson for 31 years. I have been involved with the neighborhood and the communities for 14 years. I started out being a community council member for the Jane Rees Neighborhood Association. That's where I first got involved as far as the community was concerned. After I was a community council member for about two years, I got elected for vice chair. So I've been an officer for a good 12 years that I've been involved out in the community. I have had a lot of interfaces with local government, county, and even some state entities as far as the community is concerned and looking into ways to enhance the services that are provided. During that 14 years of attempting to do it from the outside, because we have a bureaucracy that's in place and those things that happened as far as the economy and other things, things have not worked the way they should have worked. That does not mean that they cannot work. I feel that there needs to be more communication, the lines need to be open, there needs to be things shared with the citizens in layman's terms, there has to be an enhancement of putting the people first. I truly believe that because it's, those people are the same ones that vote to put elected officials in office, so we have to cater to them. We need to make them feel more worthy than a lot of them feel because I'm in a lot of conversations with people because I'm always out in the trenches. And a lot of citizens feel that they are not considered, they feel that what they say and what they ask for, that is on the lower end of the totem pole as far as any type of residual is concerned. So, that's why I decided that I wanted to run for commissioner and hope that I can help make those needed changes from within. Changes that will allow for the voice of the people to be heard and implemented into the processes. I understand that there are some proprietary issues associated with the decorum of government infrastructure and that would always be a place for that. However, we need to, to pour in one phrase, we need to work outside the box. We do too, too many things in inadequate ways. You know, it's, it's just like the housing stock. Now, understandably so, our housing stock is, is very old and there are things that contribute to saying that they're not worth being rehabbed or made livable, whether it's asbestos, whether it's lead pipes, or just uninhabitable. But what is having as many houses that we have that we are demolishing, as many houses that we have that could be rehabbed, I, I think that we need to look at doing more of that as opposed to just demolishing them because the money is available. We have too many homeless people that need to have some dwelling to stay in. So, my bid to become a commissioner is to help to enhance and enforce the holistic feelings that's associated with the needs of the people. So, on May the 7th, I hope that I can get your vote. Thank you.
Mims comes before Williams, am I off the bat?
Yes. Mr. Mims, welcome. Uh, David, how do I, I stopped it before we were spinning. Hi. Yeah, anywhere you want.
Okay, hi, my name is Jeffrey Mims and I'm pretty much a lifelong resident of Dayton except for two months that I was born in Alabama. My parents had no choice but to come with me since I rented a car and brought me to Dayton High School. I thought they liked it better here and so have I. I have, I have probably more than 40 years of service to my country as a Vietnam veteran, as educator, as a mentor for children, as a director of the New Futures Program and working with youth and working with community initiatives to sort of unify all the services that address the needs of people. And I've learned through those initiatives as well as my responsibilities as a government relations person for the school system for 25 years, that the best way to make things happen is through collaboration. And there's no one person, regardless of who they may be, how good they may be, that can make anything happen for the good, you can make some bad things happen, but you can't make good things happen for the masses of people if you do not work together. Now, many of you know me probably because I've taught your kids, I've probably taught some of you because of my long involvement in terms of the school system. But one thing is very clear, I'm a team player. I've been elected for the teachers' union president six consecutive years, I was elected to the state school board, I was elected to the Dayton school board, and every entity I've made things better. Now, I can't say that I've solved everything, you know, that would certainly be unfair and it would certainly be untrue, but with everything that I've done, I've made things better. When I look at Dayton, I look at the potential in terms of improving the quality of life for all citizens, just everyone. My children grew up here, my children went to school here and they're doing very well with their college degrees and their work employment because, and I mention that because they don't ask me for money. So the fact that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and they're making their positive contribution to society, I think is a major thing that's happening. I think if we improve the workforce, opportunities in this community, more employers will move here, they will bring employees here, they want to raise their families here, we increase the safety issues that we have in the city, and we create the kind of conditions that make all businesses want to come and want to stay. I taught the people who, as I was getting my petition signed, who do not live in Dayton and they said, you know, I really love you, I've seen what you've done, I'd like to support you, but I don't live in the city of Dayton. I said, let's hold on, once you elect me, I'm going next to Troutwood, I'm going annex Jefferson Township, I'm going to annex all those areas and then you have a chance to vote for me next time. So with that, I'm going to stop and talk about, again, I mean, I'm going to move, let you talk to some other candidates, but understand this very clearly, my head, my heart's in Dayton and again, my issue is improving the quality of life for all the citizens of Dayton regardless of who you are. Thank you.
Just don't hit your head.
Thank you all for having us out. Glad to always come to the candidates' nights, it's always good to see our neighbors and I usually learn something new at every candidate's night I've been to, I've been to quite a few. I've been in the community for 20 years as an elected official and I'm very proud of that. So, as I look around the room, I see a lot of familiar faces, most of you may know who I am, I did pass out a literature piece, I hope you get a chance to take a look at that. There's more information about me on my website, joeywheers.com. Just a really quick overview, I am a Daytonan with a school here, graduate of Dayton Public Schools, very happy to, as I've done college in this area, Central State University for undergrad, Ohio State for grad school, went away for a little while, worked at some banks, I know banks aren't as popular as they were when I first started working at banks, so I'm still very happy to work as a community banker. We do good things in the community. I've been in this community as a banker for 20 years, working in Dayton, Dayton Cincinnati, Dayton Cincinnati Columbus. It's given me a really interesting view about our region and what we should do as a region and I'll go over that in a second, but when I talk about some of my priorities, regional cooperation is a real big piece of that and how we look at ourselves as a region is a real big part of that. I've been an elected official, as I said, for 20 years, I was in the Dayton School Board for eight years, a couple of years as president, and for the past three terms, 11 years, almost 12, I've been a member of the Dayton City Commission. Very proud of that, we've had a good time, there's been some challenging times, but I would think that anyone with an objective view would look at where we are now on the Dayton City Commission and view where we were and where we are now, they would view that there's been some very positive things. If you look around and compare Dayton to other urban, I mean, other urban cities, you will see that Dayton has really done quite well through the economic downturn we all saw in 2009. There are outside agencies such as Moody's and S&amp;P who come by and they rate cities. Through our time, through at least the eight years I've, I'm sorry, 11 years I've been here, our Moody's and S&amp;P ratings have maintained the same or improved. There's not very many cities, particularly urban cities, that can say that. Part of the reason, if you look at my blueprint for a five-star Dayton, you will see at the very top, the number one thing we have to do is have financial stability. Without financial stability, nothing, none of the things that we talk about will happen. We have to maintain and use our dollars properly. So to me, the number one priority is financial stability. If we have time, we'll go into some more details, if you go to our website and talk about some of the things that I've done around trying to make sure we have good financial stability. The second thing is, I'm sure, is safety. We've got to have good safety forces, both fire and police. We, if you look at our track record, we do have good safety forces. I'm really proud of the fact that we're starting to hire new police and fire. We did have a period of time where we were not because of financial issues and others, but now we are starting to hire, so I'm excited about that, so safety has to be a top priority. And then next, in order to have dollars to manage, you have to have dollars and for the city's purposes, the only way we generate funds are through having jobs in our communities. So we have to attract and retain good quality jobs in the city of Dayton and we have to take a broader view, the region also. I will tell you, that's a change for me. When I first came on the city, I, the city commission, I really only looked at what are the jobs within the city. I still would rather the jobs be in the city of Dayton, but the reality is, we have folks who live in the city who have jobs within the region. So we have to cooperate with our regional partners and make sure jobs come throughout this region. That brings us through bullet points, as I said, the region. Well, sorry, before we do that, I wanted to first of all talk about the fourth thing, which is our young people. I've tried very hard as being advocate for our young people as relates to safety for our young people, giving young people positive things to do and I'm really proud of the fact that we were able to renovate a couple of our recreational facilities and even build a new recreational facility. I'll quickly move to the fourth point because time is limited and I will talk about regional cooperation. I just think that's the key, folks. As a city, we have to work and have relationships with others within our community, we have to grow this community, both Dayton and the region. So we need individuals who have relationships and who are willing to work with others. And that gets to the last point, I really think to have a great city of Dayton, we have to have positive leadership, leadership, folks who know how to work with others and who are willing to have an open door policy, listen to other people's ideas, work with other people, and I would like to think that if you look back at my track record for the last 20 years, you've seen it. That's been very important for a lot of reasons. One, I think that gets things done, and two, I have two young sons who have lots of friends and I have lots of young people who are around all the time and I think it's extremely important for us all in these positions to try to be role models. Did I hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, please remember me, May 7th, I'm asking for your vote, Joey Williams. Thank you.
Okay. And now, I didn't kiss anyone, is that correct? All right, Mayor Lightzel.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here in the Huffman Historic District, I love our historic districts. I only have five minutes, you know, some of these they give us 20, some five, so I've made some bullet points. First thing I want people to remember is back in 2009 when I ran for office, Dayton was stagnating, we were considered a dying city and NCR had just left and people were like a little bit upset. And I took on the system and I, I want to remind people that I took this on, I won on a budget of less than $20,000, okay, because that's important, because this time I've challenged the others to do it on half of that and I am committing to run this campaign on $10,000 because I believe that the money in politics is broken and I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a push for it here in Dayton. Now let me tell you something, three years have gone by, or three and a half almost, and we are in more top 10 lists than bottom 10 lists. I have a list here, in October of last year, I wrote an article in the city paper listing 63 things that have happened in the last three years that weren't happening before 2010. This is a list from the end of last year, there's 67 things, I think we're up to about 80 now. This includes things like GE Aviation, housing on Brown Street, housing downtown, key ads relocating downtown, some neighborhood groups starting up and getting reactivated like in Belmont Business District, 3,000% increase in recycling since 2009 and no cost to dispose. We ended the Occupy Dayton movement peacefully, we've got a do-it-yourself pilot, housing inspection, anyway, the list goes on, some's big, some is small, and what I can tell you is out of this list of 67 items, I personally touched 41 of them, either by planting a seed, inspiring, giving information that made it happen, because there are some people out there, because I'm getting feedback, to say, I don't do anything. But the reality is, I've done an awful lot and I've got a list of items to prove it. So, you're gonna hear, just so you know, you're gonna hear a couple of other candidates come up running for mayor, one's gonna speak about task forces, committees, and I guess groups, what do I have here, councils, to discuss plans that may hopefully come to fruition in maybe two or five years and get results. And then another candidate, and there's nothing wrong with this, I just want to point this out, we have three different personalities. Another candidate will get up because of his background and talk about changing laws and codes so that maybe we'll get results in two to five years, okay? My background, I have a background in insurance sales management, retail sales management, an entrepreneur, I kind of do my own thing. And I take action, I see opportunity and I see problems and I take action and I get results and I look for solutions. And what Dayton really needs right now is solutions, all right, and results, not plans and not promises, because we've had that for so long. Now, if one independent candidate can do 41 things out of 67 in three years, what could three independent candidates do on this commission? We all know the two-party system in America is broken and we have the opportunity of a lifetime here in Dayton to make such a difference that it could send a ripple effect at a national level and we can do it here. It's time to always be in front of the curve because before 2009, we were always eight years behind it and I think you're gonna find that we are so far ahead, our police department is ahead, our staff at City Hall is ahead, the movement is ahead, and we have the ability to maintain this momentum and give it, I don't know, we can take off. And so, I'm asking you to vote for me again on May 7th, but also vote independent because independent people are the only ones that can think for themselves. Thank you.
Yeah, I have my finger in the...
I'm on.
Yeah, it's lucky.
Good.
I did what you're saying, David, but there we are, got it. Okay.
Thanks, I made a few notes. Gary, it's harder, I'm sorry, Gary, it's not about your card, it's...
I make it glossy this week.
It was just a few notes.
So it's harder.
Right, right, yeah. This is to talk about, Gary. I do want to, I do want to mention that we've got Marty Kears back here taking film of me, so I want to say hi to Marty. They've been taking film on every candidate's night, which is, I think, to be used for some commercials later, so I have to look decent or they're gonna make me look bad, so I hope you understand that. You know, I think what's needed in the city of Dayton right now is a, a new pair of eyes, a new, a new set of, a new way of looking at things, a new set of experiences that brings something to the fore that hasn't been done before. I start with my experience as a judge. You know, my experience as a judge, I've handled literally thousands of foreclosure cases and I've seen what they do to our community, I've seen banks walk away from properties and I tried to stop it where I could as a judge. I tried to stop banks from kicking people out of their homes when I knew that they weren't really gonna kick them out of their homes or at the end they weren't gonna take title to their homes. I tried to be a good judge, but now in order to be a good mayor, I think that it's important to know that we have to change some laws and we can. We have to change some laws so that we get housing back in our community that's up to code. We have to find more housing inspectors, but we also have to change some laws that hold homeowners accountable, especially absentee landlords. And by absentee landlords, I mean people who are buying our properties on speculation, they're buying them through tax lanes, they're buying them through foreclosures, or they're just abandoning their properties. We can create laws that stop much of that, not all of it, but much of it, and we can hold people's feet to the fire in terms of meeting the codes in terms of housing inspection. I want to look at this whole thing through the eyes of an educator. I, I used to be a teacher, my undergraduate degree is in education and I've developed a plan where we start with kids when they're three years old. And we start there because kids in poverty who are three years old have a vocabulary of about 500 words, kids in middle-class homes, upper-class homes, have a vocabulary of about 1,700 words. They're already behind. We need to help those young children get caught up and get caught up fast that by the time they're in third grade, they're reading. We need to provide them with mentors when they're in school. Mentors work, it helps to have a mentor, it keeps you from doing illegal activities, it keeps you from beating up people, really. Fewer kids will, will get into fights when they have a mentor. It makes you go to school. Mentors are powerful and we have to provide them a path to higher education if they desire it. We have to give them a way to get at least an associate's degree. And all that is possible, all of it is possible through the eyes of an educator. I need to look at this through the eyes of a financial leader. One of the things that was mentioned about the police department, we've had some issues with the police department, looking at the city and looking at how they finance police departments and how they doing it right now, we need to change it. We need to change the way we're doing testing, we need to change the way we're working with hiring through and putting people in the academy for six months while we're paying them and they're not on the street. We need to find new ways so that the police department can be fully staffed at all times, right? We need to change it. We need to change the way we're doing testing. We need to change the way we're working with hiring and putting people in the academy for six months while we're paying them, and they're not on the street. We need to find new ways so that the police department can be fully staffed at all times. Right now, if a police officer retires, we don't replace them. We wait till we have enough openings to develop a class to go to the academy. So we might be 20, 30 officers down before we get police on the street. They're stressed. They're strained. We can look at this in a way that not only puts police on the street, as soon as there's an opening, we hire somebody, but also it saves us money. There is a way to do it. I want to look at this through the eyes of a business person. I've owned my own businesses. I understand, I counsel business people as an attorney. I understand business. And there's a good reason that almost half, and depending on who you listen to, of our properties downtown are vacant. It's not making good business sense for business people to be downtown now. And that has to change. We have to show them the way it does make business sense. And we have to provide them support. I won't change staff right away, and I won't change staff really-nilly. But when there's an opening available, we need to bring business people into government.
Next time.
That's about the points I want to do. Thank you.
Gabby Rosie?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Nan Whaley, Dayton City Commissioner, and I'm asking for your support for mayor of Dayton. I should tell you all that it's been a great pleasure to serve as your city commissioner these past eight years. I've learned a lot about myself, learned a lot about the city, and I really appreciated the opportunity you've given me to serve as your city commissioner. I also should let you know, in this neighborhood, this is the neighborhood I moved to right when I graduated. I remember meeting Rosie in Huffman when I moved here for about two years after graduation, and was really one of the big reasons why I decided to stay in the city. And so I appreciate the friendship this neighborhood brought. I'm running for mayor because I do believe in the future of the city of Dayton. And I believe that if we have the right kind of leadership in the mayor's seat, we can really make a difference and move our city forward. And in three areas I want to talk about today are about jobs, neighborhoods, and vibrancy. Now, if you go to my website, I know everybody said, "Go to their website," nanwhaley.com. There's a roadmap in the corner, and that's where you'll see my roadmap for Dayton's future. We've unveiled a jobs plan and a neighborhood plan, so if there's things I can't get through in the few minutes I have, feel free to please go check it out. But in jobs, I think it's really important that we support our downtown Dayton plan, the greater downtown Dayton plan that hundreds of volunteers have worked on to make sure that we have a thriving urban core that brings jobs to the core and creates jobs there, to make sure that we focus on advocating for manufacturing. You know, if we can create the technologies here with connecting with Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, but if we don't make it in the Dayton region, Dayton loses. And so it's very important that we really use our workforce to do advanced manufacturing and work to make sure that manufacturing is a core part of our community. That is why I started a task force that worked with Sinclair Community College, Dayton Development Coalition, business leaders from the Dayton Regional Manufacturing Association, to make sure that we're talking and advocating for manufacturing in our city. And then finally, we have to work on our workforce. We have to do better to make sure that our kids that are graduating out of high school don't have to remediate at Sinclair Community College and take classes over, that they're able to go, go to Sinclair, get the training they need to make sure that we can fill the pipeline, because right now, we're not doing that. So we need to make sure that we're connected with Dayton Public Schools. But you can read it all. There's eight points on building on our assets on the site. Neighborhoods is something I've always been really into as a city commissioner, and I'm proud of the work that I've done on the city commission. I've tried to be as open to neighborhood leaders as possible, but really working to make sure that we use our neighborhoods and connect to the city hall and make it flatter. So that way, neighborhoods feel like they have an avenue right to city hall, and city hall has an avenue right back to neighborhoods. It's very important. I think we can do a lot more work in that area. Also, I have been a leader in making sure that we do do more demolition in our neighborhoods. We have vacant properties that are too far gone in the city. Every neighborhood I walk, I see a front porch that has fallen off. Those houses cannot be rehabbed, and they're a danger, and they are not safe for our community. So we have to get more money into demolition. And then, we have to work with our neighborhoods to make sure that they can create the spaces they want and that they have the community they want to see in the next five to 10 years, and not have the city making that decision, but the neighborhood working with the city to make that decision. And then I've also been proud of the work I've done with Safe Houses to Schools, making sure that our community is connected through green spaces, through bikeability, and through walkability. And that is really key for our urban neighborhoods. The last piece I want to talk to you about is vibrancy. I believe that our city has a vibrant potential ahead of itself. I'm proud of the work that the whole commission has done on welcoming Dayton being an immigrant-friendly community and welcoming diverse folks into our city. I think it's our core to be open. As someone who's not born and raised in Dayton, I've always been so proud of how well people welcome me into this community. I think we need to continue to do that across the city and continue to have that open, that open for business, open for neighbors, open for citizens. And I'm proud of the work we've done on LGBT community in our city. I'm proud to be a leader on that. I'm proud that we had a unanimous vote on the domestic partner registry. And I'm proud of the work that we continue to say Dayton is an open community. And that's very different than other communities across the region and in southwest Ohio. So I know this is really quick, because you have about five minutes to say everything you want. I never get to say everything I want. But it's really been an honor to be your city commissioner. I'm asking for your support for mayor, and I'm asking you to believe in the future of our city. Thank you.
Okay. We'll take questions from the floor. You can direct them to a specific person, to the commissioner, candidates in general, the mayoral, or just all in generals. Somebody like to start off with a question? Come on, people. I know you have questions.
Okay, I'll go.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
And say your name, if you would.
Okay, I'm Vicki Morris. I live here in the neighborhood, and this is for the candidates running for mayor. It seems that, in fact, someone touched on the fact that we have fewer police officers available and all of that. But, you know, we have seen also, in terms of fire departments, our closest one is not even open anymore. Is it every other day?
Yeah.
Whatever it is. And so I would like to know your position on emergency services for the town, how you plan to fund that, and your position on unions, Hank, since they are union members.
We've got a class going in now for firefighters. For a while, we were not allowed to hire police and firefighters. And so as they were treading out, we could replace them. But we've worked that out with the Department of Justice and with the GARS examinations. So we've got a class going through, and I think it's gonna be a regular thing every year so that we can get the numbers back up. And you may find, yeah, the other solution, too, you know, we talk about jobs, you know, they're paid from the general fund, which comes from the tax. Well, if we can get more people working here, then the revenues go up. And we've done very well for the last three years. We were actually about $3 million ahead finally. For 20 years, we've gone down, 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 cuts, cuts. And then since 2010, we leveled off, and now we're actually ahead. So we'll be able to, well, we're putting money into infrastructure and technology and stuff where it's needed. But I think you'll find that we are very fully aware of the need for more police and more fire, and we're trying to get the numbers back up where we're comfortable. And I've got no problem with unions. I work with both the police unions and the fire unions. And if they have any questions for me, they come and ask me, so.
Well, I think we're all very concerned about our fire department down there, because this neighborhood is just rampant with arson. So to have ours closed or, you know, be not 100% functional is a real blow to the neighborhood.
They browned out one vehicle when they were using it. Yeah. That was the chief's decision.
Mr. White?
I just had to, yeah, my plan about eliminating the test is to address the problem that the Justice Department had with our forces and why they put a halt on hiring for a long time. They wanted to make sure those tests were nondiscriminatory and they worked through a long negotiating process. And nobody could be hired in the meantime. I used to be chair of the civil service board, and I understand it, and I know we can get rid of that test. We can do it by just specific qualifications for our firefighters and for our police. Then we can hire people as jobs open up. Why should we be 20, 30 people down? We could hire jobs open up. Then we aren't down firefighters and down police officers. We can maintain, much better maintain our staff and our forces. And it can be done at a cost savings to the city, actually, because we wouldn't be paying people to sit in classrooms for six months before we put them to their places. They would come to us fully trained through Sinclair College or through other kinds of education places that provide them with the kinds of certificates or degrees that they need to be hired. So they would come to us, and by the way, almost every other city, 99% of the cities in Ohio do it this way. They don't have tests, and they don't have waiting lists, and they don't have this whole problem. It's not unique to us. There are a couple other cities who do it. But it is something that we've got to come and talk.
But we have had issues with the staffing of police and fire over the past five years, specifically over the consent decree, as Judge Wagner has mentioned. We're happy to see that through, be on the other side, both on fire and police testing, and we're not only leveling, but increasing the number of police officers we have on the street. The firefighters has been more of a difficult challenge, because we are at bare minimum right now on engine houses and locations. And so that is an issue coming forth in the Kiwi Street area, I'm sure, is a concern for you guys on that site. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Dayton firefighters, or recognize that the work that police and fire do requires very specific training, and we do put them through a police academy because of some of the special issues we have in the city of Dayton. It does cost us more, but we do believe we have the best safety services in the region, which is why when we have regional issues, they call Dayton Police, they call Dayton Fire for those issues. And I'm proud of that, and I'm proud to be Dayton Police and Dayton firefighters. As far as my support of unions, I'm proud of the whole commission for supporting, no vote no on issue two. Even the mayor voted no, a resolution in support of allowing collective bargaining rights and binding arbitration. And I'm proud to be a leader in that effort. I think people do deserve to get paid a decent wage, and we should support that effort.
I have one. Both commission and mayoral candidates, you've all mentioned education. How much influence does the, is the commission able to have on education, since that is a totally separate board? Somebody can tackle it first. Joe?
Sure, I'll be happy to. I believe it's really how much effort we all decide to put into it. I mean, collectively, we, for at least the last 10, 12 years, and I know pretty regularly in the last four years, we meet with the Dayton Board of Education quarterly, and we talk about issues. But in addition to that, it's all about relationship building, as I said before. For this community to move forward, we have to have relationships. So to the degree that members of the city commission have relationships with the board members, with the superintendent, with members of their staff, and vice versa, I do think we could have an impact on things they do. I know that when they went through their building program, they will tell you that working with the city was a very positive experience. Well, that was helped because we all had good experiences. I was a school board member at one point. Of course, I knew Mr. Memm, who was on the school board. Commissioner Whaley was very active in that process. We all try to work closely, but it's all about relationships. And while there's no jurisdiction that we have over the schools, we can play a major impact if we have positive relationships.
Anyone else want to comment on the education?
I'll jump up.
No.
It's probably going in order.
Oh.
Who's first?
For questions, I was.
Mr. Memm can do it.
But you stood up first. Go ahead.
We'll pull that, everybody.
I was just gonna say, you know, I think the last three years, we've had a better relationship than from my understanding what they had before. We meet every quarter. We share ideas. I mean, people are being creative. I think the recession helped with that. You know, Winston Churchill said, "Gentlemen, we're out of money, so now we have to think." And that's what we've had to do. We've had to think, and we've had to get creative. I know that I made a suggestion to them several years ago about using Facebook to communicate with the parents of the kids, and they started using it, and they're loving it. So I mean, we can influence, and that we cannot dictate, because they are a separate entity. But we can certainly influence the direction they take, and we can help direct policy, which is what we're all supposed to do on the commission anyway, is help direct policy.
Anyone else want to comment on the education? You should have good insights on this.
I have two or three thoughts. Actually, as the president of the board for two years, and vice president for a year before that, and a longtime employee who retired from a position of teacher, coach, and director of government relations and community relations, et cetera, with the school system, the issue that you asked is extremely, extremely important. And while I think that some good things have happened, I think some even greater things can happen. I can say that under my leadership as president of the board, on an independent survey, it found out that Dayton Public School had its highest rating in 10 years during the time that I was president. Now, that came not because of me by myself. It came because of the type of relationship that we have built as far as the city commission's concerned and as far as the board's concerned. We also looked at the fact that one of your commissioners, Nan, was the chair of our levy campaign, which was the first school levy that the Dayton Public School had passed in 16 years. 16 years. So the time we look at where we were not working together as well as we should have, this community suffered because the system and the city as well, because they're connected together, had sort of a, a bit of a decline in some of those areas, if you want to call it a slip towards mediocrity, in terms of addressing all the kinds of needs that we have to address. Working together, we have found that we have not only passed a levy for operations, but we also passed a levy to build new schools in Ohio, which is because of Senate Bill 272. And at the time I was government relations, I was the lead lobbyist in terms of working with that issue to build new schools, not only in Dayton, but throughout the entire state of Ohio. And that's why we have that progress made in those particular areas. When we look at things down the line, educationally, and was mentioned before by someone, children are coming to school from the Dayton community two and three years behind in their developmental skills. 80% of those children in the entire county are coming to Dayton Public Schools. And unfortunately, sometimes, after they're in the schools for 15 minutes, they blame the teachers and the principals, et cetera. It's a community problem, and as the city works closer together, having individuals who show a passion for children, as well as some of us older children, we can make the kind of things happen to address those needs and make sure that our children come to school prepared so that when they're compared to Centerville and Kettering and Oakwood, we're comparing apples to apples instead of our children coming in behind. We have a strong responsibility to prepare them.
It's really interesting to stand up here. And on this campaign ledger, I have a picture of my ledger 20 years ago. That was July 17, post, lots of information. Again, you'll see lots of information on this. And I talked about the consent decree 20 years ago. I talked about our staffing of our police and fire. And I talked about the schools. And one time, Mayor Turner, he wasn't there yet, he was running against me. He said, "David is right. Keeps talking about the schools and ending busing, and if he wants to do that, he should run for school board." Because Mike Turner didn't understand that our schools are one of the most critical selling points of our community. And right now, our schools are still not doing what we need to do. We saw, I talked about what happened with busing, and this is preceding when I even got to Dayton. We replaced racial segregation with economic segregation. And you've heard the stats about people coming to school not prepared, but we are not preparing them for lots of reasons besides socioeconomic, and there are things that we need to do to solve them. One of the problems we've had in our community, my community, South Park, is people move in as young dummies, and then they have a kid. And you know what happens five years later? They're gone. We know that. If they don't move out, they're putting their kid in Catholic schools. They're putting him in my Valley School. I've got those people in my neighborhood, so I know this. But it is affecting each and every one of us. And you've heard all kinds of things about what we've got to do and what we got to do. And I'm gonna tell you something. We could spend $60 million on demolition and still not tear down all the houses that need to be torn down. And that porch that fell off, we can focus on the porch that fell off, and we can say, "Oh, that house has to come down." But what we need to do is start filling houses and keeping the people in this community. And the way we do that is by providing something that no other community has. And the secret to that, and I sit on the Technology Review Committee for the Dayton Public Schools, and I scoff at them, because they're sitting there talking about bringing their own technology to schools and whether we should allow kids to bring their own laptops or netbooks. We've got kids coming to school can't have, afford shoes. We are failing our children by not having every student with a computer. There's a program called One Laptop Per Child headed by Nicholas Negaponte at the MIT Media Lab. There's a program called One Laptop Per Child headed by Nicholas Negaponte at the MIT Media Lab. And you know where we're shipping laptops off to? Third world nations. And we're doing that before we're putting them in the school systems in this country. Not only we have to provide every student with a tablet or a netbook because it will actually save us money in the long run because textbooks are one of our major expenses after teacher salaries. People don't realize how expensive it is to keep textbooks going. And we can replace a lot of those with digital texts and the open source text. But we have to not only get those kids computers to make them ready for a society that will not accept a student graduating without computer skills. We have to provide that, but we also have to provide them with internet access because we have a huge digital divide in this community. And while all of you have internet access, I can tell you from going door to door, there are people that don't have internet access. And it's partially because we have a lot of problems, but we can solve those. If the entire country of Estonia can be covered with wifi, there's no reason the city of Dayton can't. And it can save us money too because our police cruisers can use it, because our fire trucks can use it, but more importantly, our students can use it. Instead of buying vacant buildings with no public use, which our current commission has done over and over and over, we just bought two for four and fifty thousand dollars each down by Wayne and Third, or investing four million dollars plus or whatever minus on a Kroger that never came because we never had a contract. We could have bought every student in the Dayton Public Schools a computer and we could have been a long way to providing wifi and high-speed bandwidth internet access through the whole community. So there are solutions, there are innovations, but they're not gonna come out of the people that we've had in office already because they've been sitting there buying buildings, dealing with demolishing buildings and thinking about all kinds of things that don't matter.
Anyone else want to comment on education?
I just would like to say, echo, I know on the commission now, Commissioner Williams has been on the school board and candidate Memes has been on the school board in the past. And I think that having them understand the positions that the school faces will be, is an addition now to the city. It's helpful to us to see where the school, the school board is sitting and what their issues are, which are very different than the city's. I mean, quite frankly, Dayton Public Schools is a larger budget and a larger bureaucracy than the city of Dayton even is. And so there are huge issues facing Dayton Public Schools and we have a lot of work to do. I'm really pleased with our superintendent, Lori Ward. I think she does a fantastic job and is working very diligently to try to move the needle because we have a long way to go. And we're talking about a statewide mandate that talks, that says we have to have every kindergartner ready for third grade to read and if they don't, if they don't read at third grade, they stay in third grade. We're talking nearly a thousand students that may not make it past third grade and get stuck in third grade. These are big issues for our community, not only our school system. And so it's very important that we have leadership as mayor and as commission to understand how that affects the community and wants to work with the school district to see how we can move the needle on education. Now, I don't think our answer is as Dayton city commissioners or the Dayton city commissioner or the mayor is getting in the schools per se. I'm not an educator. But there are things that we can do, partnering with our recreation programs, making sure that we provide more opportunities for reading in the summer. So we manage the summer slide, which is a big issue for low-income students because kids don't get to read in the summer if they don't have those opportunities. And so providing opportunities for our inner-city communities to do that, I think, will be helpful. There are ways that we can partner with Dayton Public Schools, but it has to be a partnership and one where both people come to the table and both sides come to the table willing to work and move this forward. I'm proud to be on the Learn to Earn Executive Committee for the region. It's an effort, you can go to learn to earn dayton.org. It's an effort to have our kids kindergarten ready across the county, make sure that they pass the third grade reading challenge, that they transition from ninth to tenth grade, which is where we lose a lot of students in high school, and that when they graduate from high school, they're ready to go to college, to take a job, to go to the building trades, to go to Sinclair. So that is what Learn to Earn is about. This is an intellectual capital race that every region and across the country worth their salt is having because we recognize that that is going to be what people value and what they measure when they're talking about job creation. So it is an economic development issue as much as it is a feel-good school issue for your neighborhood. And so that is why the city has to get involved and has to be a part with Dayton Public and our city schools.
Anything else on it? Does anyone else on the floor have a question?
If anybody could just kind of, I suppose, give a little bit more of your plans for developing jobs, like job growth here. All of these problems that we're all talking about in terms of keeping people in houses and generating more tax revenue so that we can fund fire departments, so we can fund public schools and all that. I mean, none of that stuff's gonna happen if the people who currently live here can't get involved on decent dayton jobs. So could you please talk a little bit more about that? Like what kind of plans you have for growing the job market here, I guess? Anybody wants to talk?
I'll go again first. Look, as I said before, that's a great question and it's really a very, some people may try to oversimplify that, but the reality is, it's a very complicated question and it requires some real thought. The reality is that if you look at our region as a whole, we have relied very heavily on manufacturing jobs. We relied on a lot of blue collar manufacturing jobs and those jobs have continued to leave. What's been replaced? High-tech jobs, jobs that require a minimum of two-year education. So I think from our perspective, our plans have to center around, how do we make sure that our workforce is, has ways to develop in ways we can get the current jobs that are out there now that require at least a two-year degree? I'm really pleased that, you know, we just had a situation where we had a attractive midmark corporation. They came to town recently, announced they're gonna bring fifty high-paying jobs. We hope that will attract other jobs. They have a manufacturing group also, but those are more of a high-tech manufacturing jobs. So again, the emphasis has to be on how do we prepare our current workforce for the jobs that are available? At the same time, I think that we have to have an open approach to the entire region. We have to have an open approach to how do we work with other partners in the region to try to find out what's the best location to attract jobs that will help the needs today? Because right now, we have a great workforce that is blue collar ready, that's manufacturing ready. And as I said earlier, my open, I would love to see those jobs within the direct city of Dayton boundaries. But the reality is, it helps us in totality as a region if we can get them somewhere in our region where folks who live in the city or anywhere else can have access to those jobs. So I don't want to oversimplify it, like I said, it's a complicated question. But at the end of the day, to me, there's really two big approaches. We have to make sure that we are ready for the jobs that are here now. They're gonna take some more education and technical expertise. And two, we have to partner with our regional partners, other municipalities, some of our economic development groups, and try to bring jobs here that our current workforce can do now. Which a lot of that is gonna be around some other manufacturing and we do see some of that, just not as much as we like.
Or whoever's on the next.
I'm gonna sit up first sometime. Appreciate the rep. There are several things to look at in terms of how we can create jobs and I appreciate that question, it was a strong one. First, we look at where some of our natural resources are that we have already in the community. And we have a very strong untapped source in terms of our river, that there are a lot of things that can be developed there and Dayton has a strong water resource. We also have a very strong hospital network. And for those who may not know, that that is the job category in terms of medical field that's gonna be here forever because there's always gonna be that particular need as far as those areas are concerned. So as we look at how we, again, someone mentioned issues in terms of schools, how we work with the schools in terms of making sure that as we prepare those young people to go from the school system to either the community college network that we have at Sinclair, which again is working very well with the city and with Dayton Public Schools, to put them in a position where after one or two years, after they've had an associate degree, they can move right into those particular areas. And they're all very qualified, very high-paying, long-lasting jobs. Another major area that we have stopped doing because of the lack of federal funding, which I think is sometimes when you look at the political arena, we need to sort of unify ourselves again and look at the political agendas that should benefit this community. Work-study programs. Some of you may recall that ten, fifteen years ago, we had a lot of work-study programs for seventh and eighth grade and beyond students who could got, who got a lot of work experience as they were working in the summer, working in the evenings, and then moving on to another location after they've had those skills. Because oftentimes, if they don't have work skills and work training, it's very hard for them to go someplace and get a job because the first question they're gonna be asked is, what type of experience do you have? Another area that we look at very seriously is we look at the core again. And as a member of the Montgomery County Ohio Regional Guest Committee, we're looking at how we can look at the resources again throughout this whole community. And we're looking at nine different counties across this nation and the kind of things that they've done to improve the ability to network and unify resources across the county. Again, we look at those type of resources, we look at Wright-Patterson, we look at those kinds of things there where the Wright-Patterson Institute is probably one of the largest educational institutions that we have in this entire region. And it's one that again, where they're training and creating jobs in that particular location as well. So I think the plans are to make sure we know what we have out there in terms of resources, what we have out there as far as needs are concerned, and then make sure that we're talking and preparing our students two, three, four, five, six years in advance to fill those jobs. Thank you.
I'll jump up now, okay. Again, you know, we talk about a Learn to Earn plan, we talk about, you know, job plans and things like that. We could be doing things now. I told you all early, I'm a person who takes action and gets results. There are things we could be doing now. The first thing we need to do is market the heck out of Dayton. We're already in the top ten list, we're no longer in the bottom ten list. I teased the candidates, had they accepted my ten thousand dollar challenge, we'd have been on national television. We'd have been on Good Morning America, The Oprah Winfrey Show, because finally you would have got three politicians that would have agreed to limit a budget and then we could have talked about the seven hundred and sixty unfilled medical jobs that exist here in Dayton and the high-tech jobs that we can't fill because we don't, we have blue collar workers. Now, that would have attracted people from all over the country to fill those positions. These are high-paying, upper-middle-class jobs, which would have brought kids in to fill the seats in some of our public schools, which would have started to turn around the problems. The other thing we have to realize, I grew up in England and I was mad by the time I reached thirty because I felt I got a better education over there. However, they taught me the same things they teach kids here, which is how to take, how to pass tests and fill out resumes. They don't teach you work ethic. And I know for a fact that we can identify kids by the time they're twelve or fourteen years old as not being kids who will graduate high school. And what we fail to do, we just give up on them. We, oh, they're not gonna pass and since we're all graded on tests and results like that, we're gonna give up on them. What we need to do is teach those kids how to make money. That's it. That's all they're interested in. They don't want to learn about history or science or biology. They want to learn how to make money. And so we need to pull those kids in and teach them to be entrepreneurs and very basic businessmen. Teach them to save some money, go get a job working for somebody in the neighborhood. Save your money, buy a lawnmower, start cutting grass. And within five years, these kids will have their own landscaping businesses and they're not on the streets doing illegal things that put them in jail, which is a burden to society. And that we can start doing immediately. We can start working on that, on educational training. We've given up on this and we just need to focus it. And I brought this up at the MCO Futures Committee and I brought it up again at a school board meeting. We have the ability to do it. And I can give you, I'm a perfect example. At the age of fourteen, my chemistry teacher in England recognized me as being a boy who would either go the good way or the bad way. Single parent, my mother was raising two boys in England in the nineteen seventies, no father at home. And he sent me off to boot camp with the British Army for a week on Salisbury Plain. And I hated it. Now, I hated it because as soon as I get there, I have my hands in my pockets and they make me do press ups, right? I just, I mean, so I made the conscious decision to study hard so I would never have to join the army. Now, there were some kids there that loved it. So they made the conscious decision to study hard so they could join the army. And maybe this is something we should look at. Getting some of these kids tied into the National Guard, working through our police training or whatever so that they make a conscious decision at an early age to stay on the straight and narrow and either become self-employed or figure some way out of it. Thank you.
I'm going next. I have a small business. I hire people. I started my small business in the South Park Historic District in a building that, if Commissioner Whaley had her way, would have been torn down. That building's won awards now. And the reason that building took place and became what it was was one, it was on my block and I wanted to see my block get better. Two, because they don't build buildings like that anymore. Three, because it's historic district and it was protected. Four, because there was an ability to get a tax credit for investing in the community and doing it. It was open to everybody and anybody. Government does not do a very good job at creating jobs, other than government jobs. And we see what's happening there. If you expect the Dayton City Commission to create jobs or if you believe any one of these people says, I'm gonna create jobs, the only way they're gonna do it is by buying them with your tax dollars. And that's what I call income redistribution. Now, I sound like a right-wing Tea Party when I say that, but the reality is, all these grants and tax breaks and incentives that are going to specific companies, we just gave a hundred thousand dollars to Midmark, we gave one A to G, a fifteen-year write-off to GE, one of the richest companies in the world. All these tax breaks and all these incentives are fundamentally flawed and wrong because when I have a small business and you have a small business and Commissioner Whaley decides to give your small business a hundred thousand dollars and not give it to me, she's putting me out of work with my own tax dollars. This has to stop, this insanity. It's a no-win game and we've been, everybody loses and we continue to play that game and the current commission has been, the best they can come up with is, oh, because everyone else is doing. No, you create jobs and you create opportunities by having a place where I can open my business and not have to worry about the crack house two doors down from me breaking in several times and setting my business back weeks while I recover from the damage they did. I know the people who broke into my office, I know what happened. The police caught them, I got my equipment back. They wouldn't have found my office had they not been coming to the dope house. And the dope house has twenty-two police calls a year. We're not solving the fundamental, basic problems that you need to solve to make it a good place to invest in safe and have a business. We've gotta do basic government right first. And this is something I've been saying for twenty years and apparently, either I haven't taken enough money from people to promote it to enough people or accepted the kowtow to the people who picked the people that picked the people that go in and run our city. But this is what government has to understand. Government has to do government, let business do business. Because the moment government gets involved, we have problems. I don't like it when my tax dollars or your tax dollars is going to subsidize putting in a Kroger store. Really? Is that economic development or is that lining the pockets of a developer? Because the Kroger store never materialized. All these economic development people, they're pied pipers. They're like the music man, coming into town, promising all kinds of things. Fire all of them, cross the border. The city needs to spend that money on police officers, on fire trucks, on laptops for our students, on wifi so our students can get online and our community can no longer be behind in the digital race. That's what needs to happen. Thank you.
Anyone else on jobs?
I have one question. You mentioned that, or is it question, answer? It's about jobs.
I was gonna answer this question.
Okay, go ahead.
That's okay. Yeah, I think that this is the big portion, you're right about. If we have, people have jobs, then a lot of problems get solved. You know, suddenly people take care of their homes, they pay their taxes, their neighborhoods get better. You know, there's many efforts afoot under the city to do this. Some of them are city-led and some of them are. I think one of the ones that, you know, Commissioner Williams was talking about and we talk about making sure that we can fill the jobs that are here, that people don't have the opportunity, that aren't ready for them or they don't have the education, is the work that the Southern Ohio Council on Higher Education is doing to really work internships in our community, to make sure that small businesses have internships, that governments do internships, that our health industry does internships because it's proven that, you know, we have a lot of higher education in this area. If we're able to make they have a connection, frankly, just like me in this community when I was in college, I made local connections. AJ was one of those connections that made me decide I want to be here because people care about me and it becomes a personal choice. And so those internships are really key when we're talking about job creation to make sure we get new people into the community as well. Also, the city has been on a, this past month was named by Site Selection Magazine as the number one city in the country on business technology, a place to put your business into business technology, which is a great opportunity. We recognize we've lost from nineteen- We recognize, we've lost from nineteen seventy-two to two thousand nine, thousands and thousands of manufacturing jobs, but we have to make sure that we invest in advanced manufacturing, and that we recognize it's going to take a while to rebound from that effort, and we're seeing that climb very slowly go the other direction, from nineteen seventy-two to two thousand nine like this, and we are starting to see those jobs increase and those numbers increase. But it is going to be slow, and it's going to take small business by small business. The city can provide the opportunity to have a good place for job creation, we try to do that with Tech Town and our connection to Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, we try to do it with the Greater Downtown Plan, trying to make it easier for people to, you know, rent in downtown Dayton and provide opportunities to change how our floor space is in downtown, so it's viable to people that want to start a small business there, and we're seeing a good return on that. But it is going to take a lot of work, and everyone's going to have to be laser-focused on that effort. Thanks for your question.
Just simple, and goes with exactly what you just summarized. I think it was you, Mayor Witzel, that made the point that businesses are not downtown, and I just want to know, why aren't they downtown?
More are coming downtown, because they're enjoying what's happening down there. I mean, yeah, there's more activity down there, there's entertainment happening. I think finally, the Downtown Dayton Partnership realized that they should be focused on marketing and not on, I guess, imagined economic development, which was what people always thought that they were supposed to do, and they're not, they're marketing, and they are. I mean, Urban Nights is a huge success, they're doing First Fridays like crazy, they're going to have entertainment in Courthouse Square, more.
So entertainment things will bring people?
Well, what happens is, if people are hanging around downtown and business people see that, more restaurants open, and more restaurants are opening, and we're getting more, there's going to be another microbrewery coming in, two of them coming in downtown. I mean, these are things that are happening, and I encourage you definitely to come out in May for Urban Nights and see all the new stuff, I mean, there's, or just First Fridays this week, so come down to the Art District and walk around and see what's going on.
Are rents, you know, good for people, businesses?
Ninety-eight percent of all residential downtown is filled, okay, and I think we're still in about twenty-six percent vacancy or almost.
Watch out about business rents, you know, office rentals.
They're very, my understanding, they're very, very affordable, and we're trying to fill the first floors the best we can. Pop-up shops are going in.
Joey, I could tell you wanted to answer, for sure, you've been quiet for a while.
I wanted to. You know, there are some positive things happening now, there really are, but just this morning, Cranes, through the Dayton Business Journal, announced that of a hundred and two markets in the country, the city of Dayton has gone from, or the Dayton region has gone from seventy-fourth to eighty-third, and now to ninety-third. We are in the bottom ten there. We can't keep fooling ourselves. What will it take to turn it around? I don't think it's as concrete as we'd like. I don't think it's as easy to say, well, only we got a few more interns, or only we did a few more this, a few little more that. We have to do all those things, I'm not saying we don't do those things, we have to do those things. But I remember, I used to work in the Department of Economic Development, I was actually for like a month, the acting director of economic development in Dayton back in nineteen seventy-eight or nine. We did annexations back then, it was different. But Tony Char told me a story then, and he was the economic development guy back then, about playing golf with what was then the president of Cardio. And then he took him out, they went golfing, he liked Tony. And as a result of the relationship that they built, we now have the Cardio plant out of North Dayton. Bringing businesses here is marketing, bringing businesses here is training people to run businesses, bringing businesses here is internships, it's a lot of small things. But I don't think there's anything more important than making sure that your mayor can sit with business folks, understand their language, speak to them, and go toe-to-toe with them on any negotiating, and make sure that they have established a trusting relationship, not only with businesses that we want to come here, and Joey was right, and the mayor tried to make it, it's a regional effort, but also with businesses that we want to keep here. We've lost some businesses. We've lost, I think, since two thousand six, the Dayton Public School, it's only thirty thousand jobs. It's not good, it's not good. But we have to have relationships, we have to build relationships with those who are running our businesses, so that we can retain them, grow them, and bring them, and that's what I hope to do. I hope to do the foredevil force and get out and sell this place personally, on a personal level, and bring people.
Mr. Greer, would you, would you like to add anything else before we close? Everyone else has pretty much had a little more time than you have.
There's been quite a lot of information shared, and you may not think so, but I'm a communicator. I'm an individual who takes things in and then do my best to share that with everyone so that everyone can understand what has been said and what is going to be done. I think our most valuable resources are our people, and we have to develop those ways that where the input from the people are listened to a lot better than it has been in the past. Because those same individuals, as I said earlier, they are voters, they are the ones that have the children who are in the schools, and so there has to be an ongoing dialogue to take that knowledge from the individuals that matter the most in the city, in order to come up with better and different ways to achieve resolutions.
I'd like to, on behalf of everyone here, thank all the candidates for coming and sharing your vision. And I'd like to ask all of the neighbors to do your part in looking at the different websites and really exploring the different options that we have in this election, because I personally feel very good about where the city's going, I feel very good about where our own neighborhood is going, I feel very good about the growing relationships that we're developing with St. Anne's and working more and more in partnership. I think, and that seems to be the thrust of what I've seen in the community engagement meetings, where we're going to start working more together as a city. So thank you all for coming tonight, and if anybody wants to just stay around, we don't have a time limit on the space here, so if you want to talk to any of the candidates or just each other, or whatever.